Oh, you ain't gonna yell at Harms, huh?
No, he's my cousin. I can't holler at him. Y'all ready now? I'd like to welcome everybody to our Valentine's February fourteenth board meeting. And I feel very protected in here today. I think everybody's in good hands this morning. I'd like to call this meeting in order and ask Craig if he would, uh, say a word of prayer for us.
We're glad to. Let's go to the board. Father, thank you for this day that you've given us this opportunity to come together, Father, to be united together and service to our community. I thank you for this place that we call home. I thank you, Lord, for the leadership that you've put in place, and we know that that leadership comes from you, Father. Thank you for the authority that you vested in these gentlemen. Uh, thank you for the way that they serve their communities, Father, for the way that they serve their fellow man. I thank you for the way that their heart is aligned with yours to try to find your will so that we as a community can, uh, can establish, Lord, a good place to live, a place to raise our families, Father, a safe community. Father, we think about the safety of the community we have and how we enjoy incredible law enforcement, emergency response, the men and women who form the backbone of all of the safety that we enjoy. Father, I pray that you would bless them abundantly, that you would provide them the resources that they need, and that you would protect them and bring them home safely to their families. All this is in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Public comments.
Mr. President, we do have a resolution to commend somebody that I think doesn't need to be introduced to anybody in our community for life-saving actions. Uh, with your permission, I'd like to read this resolution uh, and make a presentation with your permission.
You got my permission.
Sheriff, I'm gonna need you to come up here. This is one of those occasions where the sheriff typically has hounded me, uh, to, uh, prepare a resolution and to issue a commendation on behalf of the board supervisors for extraordinary and heroic actions of one of his deputies. And we routinely do that. We see that constantly, uh, uh, here in the board supervisors. We are excited always to be able to recognize the men and women of the Rankin County Sheriff's Department for extraordinary actions. But on this occasion, we have the occasion, uh, to recognize our sheriff himself for extraordinary and heroic life-saving actions. And it's my privilege, uh, to be able to read this resolution commending Sheriff Brian Bailey. Uh, I, I want you to understand that the sheriff is not responsible for requesting, asking, cajoling us. He didn't wanna be recognized. Uh, we are basically having to force him to stand up here and receive this award. And I wanna say thank you for the way that you lead this department, the example that you personally show to these men and women. Uh, and it makes a huge difference, by the way, uh, in the way that, uh, safety in this community is effectively carried out because there's good leadership that shows us the way. So here we go. This is a resolution from the board supervisors that commends and congratulates Sheriff Brian Bailey for heroic and life-saving actions, whereas the Rankin County Board Supervisors has consistently recognized our county's law enforcement under the direction of Sheriff Brian Bailey as a vital component of what makes Rankin County a desirable and a safe place to live and raise family. And whereas the Rankin County Sheriff's Department has been a consistent partner with the board supervisors in serving and protecting the citizens of Rankin County, whereas in recognizing the importance of Sheriff Bailey and the other leaders of the Sheriff's Department and the men and women who form the department, uh, the board supervisors also recognizes extraordinary heroic acts of individual officers. And in this case, Sheriff Brian Bailey himself, whose training, quick thinking, extraordinary bravery and selfless devotion to the safety of all citizens resulted in a saved life. Whereas during the night of Saturday, December the seventh, twenty twenty-four, a male appeared on the ring doorbell. Yeah, the sheriff had the ring doorbell, uh, has, uh, appeared on the ring doorbell camera at the sheriff's personal residence, and he was screaming for help. Sheriff Bailey discovered that the male had a gunshot went into his chest. The gunshot was later determined to be self-inflicted. The sheriff, without concern for his personal safety, responded immediately to the call for help by initiating first aid. Sheriff applied pressure to the wound, stemmed the flow of blood, performed other life-saving actions in advance of the arrival of paramedics. This distraught man was then transported to a local hospital. He eventually made recovery. He's getting his life together, and he has expressed appreciation to the sheriff for his, for saving his life. Through quick thinking, selfless devotion, and years of law enforcement and life safety training, Sheriff Bailey saved this Rankin County citizen's life and restored him to his family and his community. And this man would have died but for the heroic actions of our sheriff. Whereas Sheriff Bailey engaged in heroic life-saving actions and should be commended for extraordinary bravery and selfless devotion to his community. And the sheriff serves our citizens every day as an example of solid law enforcement and the solid law enforcement community that Rankin County enjoys and appreciates. The actions that the sheriff has served remind all citizens of Rankin County, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department, are trained and ready to run toward and not away from danger and to place themselves in harm's way. So being resolved, the board supervisors congratulates and commends our sheriff, Brian Bailey, and all the men and, men and women of the Sheriff's Department for their dedicated service to all citizens. The actions of the sheriff are commended, and they provide a positive example to those who serve and protect the citizens of Rankin County each and every day. Sheriff, that's been resolved this fourteenth of February. And it's signed by each of our supervisors and by our county clerk, Mr. Scarborough. I wanna present you with that, uh, resolution. Uh, and this is a heck of a nice, uh, honor right here. Sheriff's receiving the life-saving award, and he oftentimes is the one who's handing this out. It's my privilege to be able to hand this to my sheriff. Congratulations.
Two things I wanna say, and I said, I'm, first off, she's gonna let the dude back in the car. I have to share this with Christie because she was hung, we were hung together, and, uh, she, uh, uh, deserves part of this award because she, during this chaos, she was finding my radio, which I couldn't find. She was finding my phone, and she had a flashlight. But the biggest thing is this young man wanted to leave, and she spoke words of life. This man was waiting on, uh, Brandon and, uh, the ambulance to get there. I gotta commend Brandon for the effort, the effort, the effort, the service. But, uh, Christie was a trooper during all of this. And to the board, I'd like to tell you this, that the medical training that we received, the board supervisors provided years and years ago. The medical bag that Christie was handing me, medical supplies, I don't know, the board supervisors provided too. And so it's because of that that, that we were able to, to help this man. And I thank the board supervisors very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah. Up next, under public comments, we got Mr. Rodney Holder.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm here really to say a big thank you to the same people that y'all just mentioned a few minutes ago. Sheriff's Department, my, uh, or the fire at my daughter's house on February the seventh. Um, uh, the call went out. You had, uh, three fire departments showed up, Langford, uh, both from, two of them from the Russell area. Um, it was just amazing when I drove up the driveway and saw the number of people that were surrounding that house. We even had a couple of supervisors there. I was just really, you know, see Scott standing over there by the lagoon, holding the fire hose, trying to fill up the, fill it up so that the, excuse me, the, uh, fire truck could pull the water out of it. But, um, I just wanted to come here this morning and tell y'all that, uh, from the deepest part of our hearts, we appreciate the efforts of Rankin County. Uh, again, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, emergency effort. I mean, it was, it was really, uh, more than you could take in in one day. But again, thank you very much. It was just, you know, amazing to see everything that went on.
Yep.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good to hear good news, isn't it?
It is.
Let's keep it going.
Positive comment.
Alright, uh, old business.
I make motion to approve February third, old minute.
Second. Steve made a motion. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Has everybody had time to look over and read the consent agendas?
So Keith, is that an appointment, that court order? Is that a new hire?
Yes.
Where are they going to be located?
The, uh, in Circuit.
Yeah.
That's a, a new hire that is an AOC employee. So they're paid through a stipend through AOC. And we pick up what they don't pay.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Steve made a motion. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Ms. Stacy, tax assessor.
Morning and happy Valentine's Day.
Good morning.
Alright, um, under item A, requesting authority, um, to adjust the twenty twenty-four home state exemption supplemental rule.
Brad made a motion. Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item B, petitions for change of assessment on twenty-four real and personal property assessments.
So move. Second. Scott made a motion. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item C is requesting, um, it's just a receipt actually, for the Center of Violence Prevention for an exemption on new property that they purchased.
Motion approved.
Second. Jay made a motion. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item D, uh, pin four six five seven eight was erroneously assessed due to incorrect acreage for the twenty-three tax year. We're just requesting that the Tax Collector's Office refund the difference for the acreage only for the twenty-three tax year.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Pin seventy-eight oh seven three was erroneously assessed to the incorrect property owner. That's been corrected. We're requesting the Tax Collector's Office to reissue a corrected tax statement for the twenty-four taxes.
So move. Scott made a motion. Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
I'll take the next section, Mr. President.
Mr. Pittman? You're gonna take Mr. Pittman?
I am. He's flying in solo today, so.
Okay. You can just keep your seat. You don't look like you was making the effort, so just keep your seat.
We ask for approval of a copy of our contract with Southern Duplication, Mrs. Clark Prosecutor's office.
Motion to approve.
I second it. Steve made a motion. I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh. And we got Mr. Harrison.
Oh.
You did make the effort to come up. Thank you, Mike.
Roadwork, uh, accomplishing schedule for February. Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Uh, B, I've got a Comcast utility permit along Andrew Chapel between Adam Estate and Chapel Hill Lane, District Four.
Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Parker.
Morning.
Good morning.
The, uh, first item we have on these, and item A, is Persimmon Ridge Subdivision. This is a, uh, subdivision on Melhelm Road in District Four. It started out as a, excuse me, a three-lot subdivision, uh, and then it was amended in November to a one-lot subdivision. And, uh, currently the county has a letter of credit of thirty-six thousand two hundred dollars, which was for the three lots. And, uh, the developer has requested to reduce that to eleven thousand five hundred, which would be the amount for one lot. Uh, and so our recommendation is upon receipt of the eleven thousand five hundred for the county to release a letter of credit, uh, for thirty-six-two.
Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item B, Mr. President, is, uh, one of our ARPA projects. This is a stormwater detention restoration, uh, at Live Oaks, uh, program element three point oh two. We recommend an approval of payout number eight, which is the final payout from Hodges Land Services in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. An authority to issue that check.
Motion approved.
Second. Brad made a motion. Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item C, Mr. President, is another ARPA project, uh, program element one point oh three, Indian Creek Bank Stabilization. We recommend an approval of a summary change order from Hip Hill, uh, for a decrease of forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. That's a District One.
That's not a misprint, is it?
That is correct. It is a decrease.
Decrease, okay. I was just making sure, decrease. I make a motion. Second. I made a motion. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item D, Mr. President, is on the, uh, same project, one point oh three. Uh, it is the approval of the final payout from Hip Hill Construction, Inc., uh, for forty-five thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and fourteen cents. An authority to issue the check.
Did you say final? Motion approved.
I second. Jay made a motion. I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
That's not the total project cost. That's just the final payout.
I was, I was glad to finish up.
We finished Live Oaks in, in item B. Uh, no doubt. Uh, item E is also an ARPA project, uh, program element two point oh two. That's Pine Brook. I would recommend an approval of payout number five from Southeastern Pipeline and Environmental Services for two hundred and fifty-four thousand fifty-two dollars and eighty cents. An authority to issue that check.
So move. I second. Scott made a motion. I seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item F is on our gun road improvements, phase two. We recommend an approval of payout number ten from Hip Hill Construction Company, uh, for fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. An authority to issue that check.
I make a motion.
Second.
I made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item G is an ARPA project, hydraulic restoration at Melme, program element four point oh nine. We recommend an approval of payout number four from To Be Dirt and Contracting LLC in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents. An authority to issue that check.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item H, Mr. President, is also an ARPA project, program element three point six two. This is a bridge replacement on Purvis Creek at Diamond D Lake Road. We recommend a final payment in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents under purchase order number two four three four five two to Hip Hill Construction Company, Inc., and authority to issue the check.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Hey, one question to him. Do you know when they're gonna start on the island up there in front of them?
I, I don't know. They have not told me. They may have communicated with Chris. I'll check and, uh, I'll give you an answer before you.
Okay. And that's about all their liking, you know. I just curious when they was gonna get, yeah, just check with that and let me, let me.
Alright, I'll let you know.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Slay.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
We've got some settings that we need to take care of. I would ask for one motion to set items A, B, C, and D, February twenty-seven and nine AM. We'll set all those matters. Those appear to all be nuisance property considerations.
That'd be my motion.
Second. Brad made a motion to set A through D. Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Gentlemen, items E and F are also public hearing settings, March the third. So these would be setting two matters for public hearing on March the third. The first one is Roy Anderson conditional use permit at Kirsten Way. The other is a Rankin County initiated rezoning request for the property at three seventy-nine Highway forty-three South. So we would ask for one motion to set items E and F for March three at nine AM, please.
Make a motion to set those for March third.
Second. Steve made a motion. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
The board has taken action to set all of those matters now, both for February twenty-seven and March third. That's the only action that the board's gonna take on those matters today. So if anybody's here, uh, on either of those matters, it'd be appropriate to show up on the hearing date. That's when we'll, the next action will take place for those. Item G would, is a public hearing for the Daniel Freeman conditional use, uh, permit. This is at twelve oh seven Shiloh Road. This is a District Four property. I'm gonna open that public hearing. Mr. Freeman is seeking a conditional use permit to place an accessory dwelling unit behind his future home at twelve oh seven Shiloh Road. This is a five point eight acre parcel. This is owned RE one. It's located, uh, as Lot Four in Deer Acres Subdivision. RE one will allow an accessory building or dwelling unit through a conditional use. Mr. Freeman intends to build the accessory dwelling unit and the main dwelling unit at the same time. The accessory dwelling will be for his daughters when returning home from school. Mr. Freeman also owns lots five and six, uh, adjacent to Lot Four, and intends to construct permanent dwellings for his daughters in the future. We have received, uh, we have received a letter of approval from the developer of this subdivision. That public hearing is open. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Daniel Freeman conditional use permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter this time unless the board has any questions or concerns. Uh, Brian, do we have our standard conditions on this one, uh, for dwelling units? Where we say basically that a dwelling unit that is an accessory structure has to be rendered not a dwelling unit once the primary dwelling is brought online.
Sure.
That, that standard condition will be in play here. Uh, but that's probably the only condition that I can think of that we have in place. Okay. Alright. Unless y'all have any questions, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carries.
Item H, gentlemen, is a public hearing on the Paul Hopper rezoning request. This will be North Sand Hill Road and Midway Road. This is District Four property. Uh, I will open that public hearing. Mr. Hopper is seeking a rezoning request to rezone parcels M one, uh, M sixteen dash five. What you see, the, the, uh, I'm not gonna call out those, all those out. There's multiple parcels that are being rezoned. They're all blocked together, uh, as, uh, as one large one hundred and nineteen acre block of property. Uh, this is on North Sand Hill Road. They are currently zoned A two. Uh, the rezoning request is to take the property from A two to RE one. Uh, parcels altogether total one hundred and nineteen acres. Mr. Hopper plans to subdivide the property, uh, if rezoned into twenty-one lots, twenty-one lots that will range in size from fourteen point eight eight acres to three acres with an average lot size of five point six six acres. Each lot will front on the public road. We have received no calls in opposition on this matter. I will ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Paul Hopper rezoning request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? You're gonna need to come forward, uh, if you can. Uh, let me bring the, the mic to you so everyone can hear you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
John Truffin, Sand Hill. My question is if you, if you changed this, are we gonna be forced to quit farming on the property?
On the property that is being rezoned? I, I think eventually you will have to, especially if they build a subdivision, on it. Yes, sir. Yeah, you're not gonna be able, able to farm the property if they're building houses on it. Yeah, so I, and that's what I thought was gonna be the question, uh, would there have to be cessation of farming activity in the community? The answer to that is absolutely not. Uh, this is, uh, a rezoning request for the specific property only. There is no zoning action taking place for any other properties, just the hundred and nineteen acres. Its current use, which I assume, Mr. Chapman, is row crop agriculture or farming? Yes, sir. Uh, that, that current use is likely to go away. Uh, it's going to convert to residential and not agricultural. Uh, any, does anyone else have any question? Anyone, uh, to speak in opposition on this matter? Gentlemen, I don't see anyone else, uh, asking to, to speak on this matter unless the board has questions. The, uh, the basis in the application, by the way, you've received the application from the applicant, Ms. Harper. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Harper has included, uh, a number of evidentiary findings or statements concerning the justification for the request of rezoning. The application adequately states the basis that this board has authority to make a rezoning of property own, such as there's been a cha, a change in the character or the condition of the community that justifies the needed change in zoning. And also, there is a demonstrated need for the rezoning. I think it's pretty obvious to this board, uh, at throughout the last several years, there has been significant pressure to move more and more ag-based property in certain specific areas of Rankin County into a residential zoning context to provide perhaps housing. That pressure has been well demonstrated in a number of cases. This area right here is, uh, subject to, uh, a change in character and condition as the surrounding properties move from a more rural setting to a more residential setting. We've seen it consistently. So there is a base, a demonstrated basis for the rezoning. You still have the ability and the discretion to reject any rezoning request on any basis that this board believes is reasonable under your authority. So it's, it's not to suggest that just because you get an application that you have to grant a rezoning request. This board has the discretion to make those kinds of, uh, of calls. Uh, and so what's before you now is a request to rezon, rezone a specific piece of property into a different context from what it is right now, and that there has been a demonstration that if this board chooses to do so, it is justified in doing so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Jay made the motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
Yes. Um, as Craig stated, there is pressure, uh, for residential development. Uh, our office takes applications and makes sure that they are qualified and, uh, then bring it before us. Um, and this is something that's really difficult for the guys up here to make a decision when some of these lands, some of these properties go back many generations in agriculture. However, a lot of these landowners, this is their savings account. This is their retirement account. They look to something for them to be able to retire on, uh, their kids, whatever, leave it to their kids, for whatever reason. I want to try to make sure we don't deteriorate, uh, the community, uh, by flooding it with... to make sure we don't deteriorate, uh, the community, uh, by flooding it with too many. And therefore, we put restrictions on the size of the lots and the size and the homes and things like that. Instead of putting a hundred homes on this hundred acres, we have put restrictions to where there's only twenty-something. And they all have road frontage. Twenty-something homes times about three and a half cars per home does add traffic and increases the population at the schools and watershed, but, um...
It's manageable, Steve.
It is manageable and I, I know there's people in the community, including myself, that hate to take one acre out of productive agriculture. But then whenever you look at the landowner, it says, what else can I do with it? You know, I can rent it to a farmer, but anyhow.
Steve, I think you've got competing interests here. You've got a landowner, you've got a tenant that is row crop agriculture, and you've got others in the community. It's that, the considerations that have to be considered here are multiple. They're not just any one individual land user. There's multiple interests at play here. And, uh, sometimes those interests don't align, they conflict. Uh, no one, no one here, uh, misunderstands, especially when you've got row crop agriculture that has to take place on rented property. There will occasionally be disputes among the underlying owner of the property and the tenant that's row crop ag. There are gonna be, uh, conflicts about what's the best use of that property from time to time. And at the end of the day, the owner actually gets to make that call.
In the, I know in the past when we've done some of these, Steve's always, you know, put something there about agricultural steel will be done on adjacent property. There's no, you know, trying to get it shut down.
Yes, sir.
So would that be done at the actual, the next step, not this one?
Uh, actually, this is, this is the rezoning. So the approval of the subdivision itself, Jay, is, is yet to happen. Uh, because I think, uh, rightfully so, the applicant, uh, in this case, the owner of the property, but also, uh, Mister Hopper, who is, uh, is in the nature of a developer here for subdivision purposes. Mister Hopper has to, he didn't wanna incur the cost of actually designing and building out a, a plat until we saw what was gonna happen with the rezoning. So the next step in the process will be, uh, the presentation of a plat that meets our requirements. And I think Miss Parker would be in a position to address things like stormwater.
At that point, we also make sure that it's covered with our road system out there.
Water.
Making advantage of.
Water shed, that type.
That's correct.
Put a road system.
Farmers can still farm that's on our property.
But if I road it to your gates, there's need to be some mechanism there to help protect.
Absolutely. Uh, and this, there is a public road that will serve as the primary means of access for each of the lots that are proposed here or will be proposed here. And so, yes, to Jay's point, attention has to be brought to bear on what will happen if there's construction activity for these houses that could damage or impact North Sand Hill Road, for instance. There's another road that by six too, Steve.
Midway.
Midway. Yeah, so both of those roads are probably gonna have to be addressed as a part of the subdivision development. But right now, what we're here on is just the rezoning activity. So any other questions, gentlemen?
Well, uh, which we have made motion and voted and we're in, well, not we had voted, we're discussing it. Am I hearing that? I mean, I, I understand you can farm it as long as the owner of the property says you can farm it. Uh, that's, this doesn't, the zoning doesn't tell you that you can't farm it because it changed zoning.
That was my question.
The on- the owner can say, I don't want you farming it anymore, but he can say that anyhow. It doesn't matter what the zoning is.
So, so my question, Steve, to go along with what you just said was, if, if we voted to approve this zoning, does that stop the farmer from renting?
Absolutely not.
He could fall in the sparring if he wanted to.
Uh, so, so let's talk about that.
So if somebody wanted to purchase all the property, you know, they could purchase the property and continue to farm.
Yeah, so what I don't know and what this board can't possibly know is Mister Chapman's agreement with the current owner of the property, current owner of the property. That agreement for the farming rights. I, I, I have no idea what that document says, never seen it. It's not really germane to our discussion. We're not doing anything that affects that. If there is an, a, a current farming lease agreement between Mister Chapman and the current owner of the property, and that lease agreement gives Mister Chapman specific rights, those rights are not cut off by this board's action today. We are considering only a rezoning for our zoning ordinance purposes. And this will allow any intended user of the property in the future to be able to use this land in accordance with our zoning ordinance if that new owner chooses to do so.
Correct.
How that affects Mister Chapman's current agreement, that is not something that we're here to address today. Don't need to.
Mister Chapman, you understand what we're saying? This is not gonna stop whoever you, whoever from farming it. It's the owner's discretion before it's owned and after. And then this is similar to some land that you formed years ago that I live. It was changed zoning twenty-something years ago. And a few of us, even though it was busted up into ten acre, twenty acre plots, ended up buying all of it. There's, you know, there's large hundred acre, two hundred acre, even more than that on farm, the land that you formed years and years ago over off of Sump Ridge. And it's still an act, I mean, I have cattle on a lot of it. Uh, Journey has horses and cattle and then Mister Busby, anyhow. So over twenty years, it's still in agriculture, even though it did change some zoning. And that's the way this is looked at. Now, it will be really scrutinized as far as watershed. They have to pass the test of, are you causing water to leave there faster than it was leaving before or more? There's different things. This is just the zoning. There's different things as far as the size of the homes and what type homes will be able to go in there. And we're gonna watch all of this carefully, carefully. So, uh, anyhow.
Any other questions?
Any question, any, anything else that we can answer? Okay.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. We had a motion by Jay and seconded by Brad and we threw a discussion, we're ready to vote? All right. Let's vote.
All in favor? Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, gentlemen, we're gonna close that public hearing if I forgot to do that. All right, item I, this is a public hearing for PIC Land Development. This is a rezoning request on Holly Bush Road. This is District Four property. We'll open that public hearing. PIC Land Development is seeking to rezone parcels M three dash one twenty and M thirteen dash one dash forty on Holly Bush Road. These will be going from A two to RE one. These two parcels combined will total fifty-eight point eight, I'm sorry, fifty-eight point five acres. PIC Land Development, uh, plans to subdivide this property into four lots. And the smallest lot will be two acres and that will be fronting on, uh, Holly Bush Road, I believe. That's correct. All right, and so that public hearing is open. Uh, gentlemen, we've received no calls in opposition on this matter. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the PIC Land Development rezoning request? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? If you'll come forward, please.
Good morning.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Teresa Payne. I'm from Mississippi and I got a letter about the rezoning.
If you'll give your address for the record.
My address for this property or the address to my house?
Your, your home address.
It's eight thirty-three Northwest First Street, McGee, Mississippi. Three nine one one four one. I received a letter about the rezoning. This is air property that they are talking about. It's not only mine, it's my family's, mine. And I'm up here to find out, like, I can't in my mouth, I didn't know I was gonna get it right now. I'm trying to find out what's going on about the land. Because it's like my, um, my step cousin land and she's selling her land. We have land in it also.
Inside that red box, you say that your family.
This is what, this is what they sent me with the drawing and everything. And I'm trying to find out what's going on.
Okay, uh, your question said, you, you said this is air property?
Yes, it's air property.
The gentleman who has made the request for rezoning owns the property. And so I'm trying to figure out, are you saying that your family owns the same property that this gentleman claims to own? Or are you saying that your family owns property near this? Because you would've gotten the letter if you have property near where that red box is.
Well, it's near, it's in the percentage of the red box.
Huge difference between what I needed to know about why you were here. You and your family apparently own property adjacent to the red box?
Yes.
Okay, that's different. They are asking to rezone this property so that they can subdivide the property into four parcels instead of one big red box? They wanna make four smaller boxes inside the red box and put houses on it. That's what's being requested.
Okay, that mean that if it's in the area where our property is, we're gonna have to give them the right to make a road to go across our property, uh...
No, ma'am, they have access to their property from Holly Bush Road.
Okay.
They don't need to come across any, anybody else's property. Am I wrong about that?
You're correct.
Okay.
Teresa Payne?
You're Miss Teresa, so you own property to the west of our property.
Oh, okay.
And I believe your sister has got a lot of trees down.
That sounds like, that sounds like, that could.
Your, your relative. That's right, so your property, I believe, is to the west and then up to the north.
Let me, let me see if I can help.
Because all I did was got the zoning and that's what we're here trying to find out.
These properties right here that are carved up into smaller boxes?
Okay.
That's probably your family's property?
Okay.
All right, just to the west? Okay, so you're, you're talking about over here. The, the red box is, um, is the applicant's, the man who's asking for the rezoning? That's his property. That's what, that's what's being requested today is to, is to address the zoning on this red box.
Okay.
It doesn't affect any of your property at all. What we're doing doesn't affect your property. You don't need access across Miss Teresa's property to get to your property.
Right. I don't, I don't think this.
Step. Relative.
Miss Deella?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been trying to talk to her about buying the property, but I didn't. The property that she's got to sell, but there's, you know, they got a lot of trees and I was saying it was pretty as it used to. So we, but you have a piece of property that's right next to hers in the middle that you have to have an easement to get through and we're not obviously affecting your property.
Okay, I'm just trying to find out, 'cause I ain't know what one on, I live here with God.
We appreciate you showing up.
This shows, gentlemen, that our rules, the way we do this, they work. We, we like to make sure that people whose property is immediately adjacent on these kinds of requests actually get notified in writing. And sometimes they don't have the foggy clue what's going on.
Yeah, right.
So thankfully, our rules work here. Everybody got an opportunity to know, hey, something's about to happen. Miss Teresa, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
We're happy to be able to answer your question for you and I hope you feel like you got an answer.
All right, y'all have a listen.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition on the requested rezoning? Anyone else? Gentlemen, I don't see anyone else to speak in opposition on this matter. Unless you have questions, uh, at this time, it'd be appropriate to entertain the requested rezoning, again, to move from A two to RE one to allow for subdividing of the property.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. That will conclude our public hearings for today, the ones I know about that have been on the agenda. Uh, item I, uh, I'm sorry, item J is authority to void the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four tax sale. Refund any tax sale purchaser for G N B Incorporated. That's the old Exite Battery.
Did you close that?
I think I closed the PIC Land Development rezoning request public hearing. If I didn't, it's now closed. Thank you, supervisor. Supervisor's fastidious, gonna make sure we're buttoned up here. Yeah, G N B Incorporated Exite Technologies, that's the battery plant, guys. That's the battery plant. Uh, that entity is, remains in bankruptcy, uh, protection. Uh, and so what we're doing is cleaning up the records to reflect that we're not selling the property taxes that have not been paid on this. We don't want a unknown, uh, un, uh, a, a potential tax sale buyer without any knowledge that they might be inheriting properties that are in a bankruptcy context. We're trying to avoid that. So, uh, so it, to the extent that they went through the sale previously, we are avoiding those tax sales and refunding and we're making an effort. I think we're making an effort, trying to keep them out of the tax sale as we go forward. So that's what you're doing here, you're just cleaning up the record.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Our crack staff, uh, Jessica and Samantha primarily, uh, have been champions of trying to help me figure out and find some old records that reflect some action of prior boards of supervisors to take on responsibility and provide for county maintenance of certain roads in Rankin County. And as you can imagine, it's a Herculean effort to have to go back and dig through historical documents. So I wanna give them both credit for the work that they do. Uh, and I appreciate them and I know that they appreciate being singled out like that, uh, publicly. Uh, this one is called Highway Acres. This is actually in Scott's district. It's near Spillway Road. It's a public road. There is a supervisor's minute entry from a long time ago where Highway Acres was taken, uh, and, uh, created as a public road for county maintenance. This is doing nothing more than acknowledging it. For some reason, the road did not get tracked, did not get put into the system and has ever since the date that the supervisors back then said it would be public, it has not been carried on our books as a public road. So you can imagine the confusion that that has created when you've got some folks that say, I know it's public, I know that the supervisor took it. Where is it? It's not in the system. So this is to clean it up and to make sure that it gets into the system and is tracked now as a public road from now on. And so that's all this is. I just need a, a motion to approve item K.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, this is now Scott, Scott Berry Acres instead of.
Yeah.
How long was this road?
Yeah.
How long, how far, how long was it for?
Uh, this road serves as the, one of the primary means of access to get to a Presbyterian church. Yeah, it's kind of important that it, that we get this cleared up uh, because it's certainly being used and maintained as a public road.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, uh, item L, gentlemen, is acknowledgement of receipt of an invoice from Bloomfield Equities. It's the owner of the Brave Stadium in Pearl. Uh, this is further to the local and private legislation that was passed by the Mississippi Legislature last year that authorizes this board to contribute funding for the purpose of maintaining and supporting the work and the mission of the Brave Stadium, uh, under its new leadership. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yep.
So do we need to put this off till we get that clarified?
We just need to drop that whole name, Braves.
Right.
I don't care what we call it other than that.
We will refer to that as the stadium in the city of Pearl that is, uh, that is operated now under new management. Uh, the total amount of financial support as authorized by the legislation is four hundred thousand dollars. You'll be authorizing the issuance of a check in that amount.
I make a motion?
Second.
Second.
A motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Gentlemen, we've run into a situation where the legislature, uh, adopted amendments to current law that have to do with Chantry Court psychiatric commitment proceedings and how those are handled, how those are justified within the context of the court system. Because of that, we are gonna have to make a change in an agreement that we currently have in place between the county and Region Eight Mental Health Services. Region Eight does an extraordinary job of helping us with our psychiatric commitments, but because of the change in the law, we have to do something different with the, with the agreement that we have and we're working through that process. In the interim, the Chantry Court has entered an emergency order that will allow us to continue with psychiatric commitments in the court system despite the fact that we don't currently have an agreement that lets us account for that in accordance with the new law. Okay, so that order covers us in this interim. We don't think we're gonna need a lot of time to get this all addressed, but we do need some time. And so all you're doing is acknowledging that there is an emergency order that's gonna cover the process and that the county administrator is authorized to receive and to pay invoices received for the work that's associated with that. Just need a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item N, gentlemen, is, uh, the selection of a vendor to provide energy savings performance analysis at no cost to Rankin County taxpayers and to issue recommendations for energy savings activities that will result in energy cost savings to county taxpayers. I need a motion for us to select that vendor. My understanding is that the board is prepared to select PATH, P A T H. Uh, if that is your selection, I need a motion to select PATH as the vendor to provide energy savings performance analysis.
That's my motion.
Second. Steve made a motion, Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion?
I do have one, one request.
Okay.
That you give me some flexibility on how much my staff's time, timing? Just let me decide when the appropriate time for them to come in, if they decide to come in and work with them that way.
Right, they notify you and kind of work it around your schedule, so they're not just coming to you.
Let's take that as it comes.
Okay.
And work with them. Uh, if we have a problem, let's address it then and not just throw an umbrella over everything.
At, uh, at, at this juncture, just to, a little more context, my, my understanding is that they, they first do an analysis and they make recommendations. It'll be up to the board at some point to, to receive the analysis and the recommendations and to decide at that point what work will be done. Uh, Keith, are you saying that even the analysis is going to have to have some interaction?
I think they're gonna need access to our records.
Yeah.
And right now, we have auditors in here.
They, I think they're easy to work with. I don't think they're gonna try to obstruct anything or cause any problems with the working of our office. If it is, let us know.
Okay.
All right, so that'll be, it, it's a two-step process, gentlemen. Analysis is first and then recommendations and decisions concerning what we're gonna do in response to that analysis, that's later.
And this is at no cost.
That's correct. The analysis is, yes.
Analysis, yeah. Okay.
And like I say, if they would, you know, just work, you know, if there's an issue or something, you know, let us know. So, uh, when they're coming in, that, uh, it's not affecting, you know, our employees and, and stuff.
All right.
Uh, we've had a motion, a second motion. I guess we're ready to vote. All in favor? Motion carries.
Gentlemen, I've got one matter and additional business that I'd like to bring up with you after Mr. Hicks's presentation. And then I've got two matters in executive session that we need to address.
Um, Mr. Slay, before you leave, probably because of my tardiness in getting back to you, we were gonna address a resolution.
Yes, sir.
That's not gonna happen today.
That's additional business.
Okay, that's under additional business. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hicks, am I stepping up to the mic?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item A is approval payout number seven to Southeastern Pipeline and Environmental Services. This is on the Oak Grove, uh, ditch project in District Five, and the amount of the check we're asking for authority to issue is two hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Is this, this is ARPA, isn't it?
Sir.
ARPA?
It is.
Okay.
Is this the file I paid?
No, sir.
For y'all that are out there don't know, ARPA is some of the monies that came down from federal to the state to us for infrastructure, for water, uh, things that we're fixing here. We're just getting it and spending it now, but anyhow, all right.
Motion approved. Second. Jay made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item D is approval payout number five. This is to Thornton Construction and this is on our, uh, reservoir east project. It's in the amount of three hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars, forty-three cents, and authority to issue that check for District Four project.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion, Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
And that is not a final payout either.
This is also an ARPA project, monies that come, come down from federal, state to us.
Yes. Um, item C, as you witnessed this morning, we received, uh, three new Pierce commercial pumpers, uh, one for Cleary, one for Cato, and one for Evergreen, uh, fire departments. And I need authority to issue the check for that P O.
Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Keeping up with fire trucks, um, we're asking for authority to issue a P O to purchase two new. These will be twenty-twenty-eight, uh, responder pumpers. And this will be for Robin Hood and Florence, and we expect these will probably not be delivered until twenty-eight, twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
I make a motion?
Get the order in there.
I made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
All right, um, item E is authorization for the appropriate county employee to sign and submit application for, uh, community project grant funding. And this is through a nationwide home improvement vendor. And, uh, it's going to be used to enhance our county-owned facilities. This will be no cost to the county. It's not a matching grant.
Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion, Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
All right, item F, we, we've, uh, come up with some dates for our spring cleanup and we're asking for you guys to, uh, authorize us to go ahead and publish that. And it's for April twelfth through May tenth, and we're gonna put, like we did last year, one, one district at a time. Uh, and so we can concentrate on that.
Will y'all get those dates for each district? Can you let us have?
Yeah, they're, they're on there.
They don't have.
Yeah, we have a handout ready.
Oh, okay.
I believe there's only consent or backup.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Scott made a motion, Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
The last item listed there is I need authorization to submit some required documentation to M dot, and this is regarding the I twenty connector.
Motion to approve.
Second. Steve made a motion, Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Ah. Two ayes. How many more you need? Motion carries.
If it's okay with the president, I have two items of additional business I'd like to go through real quick. Um, the first item, I request the board to add authority to accept the Department of Public Safety's Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. This is for the Sheriff's Department. It's in the amount of nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And we'll use these funds to purchase new body cameras, and there was no match for this grant, but we have received the check. We're just asking the board to accept that.
We need, Mr. Slay, we need to make a motion to add this to the.
Yes, motion to add.
Motion to add.
We need a motion to add. Scott? Second. Made a motion, Brad seconded the motion. All in favor? Motion carries.
Now.
Now approve it.
Well, we're, we're, what?
That was a, a nine thousand one hundred and forty dollar grant.
Grant.
Just acknowledge you've received, that we've received the funds.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second. Brad made a motion to approve, Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
And one other item, Mr. President, I want to make sure Jay's listening. Um, it's an authority for me to cancel the maintenance agreement with Harris Delta for our county's financial software.
Motion to approve.
Or motion to add. We got a motion to add, need a second.
Second.
Steve, Jay made a motion, Steve seconded the motion to add. All in, any further discussion? All in favor? Now we need a motion to approve. Jay made a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we just need to rest for our county to do it.
We're getting there.
All right.
So we just discussion, Jay?
That's it.
Not yet? Should we vote? All in favor? Motion carries.
And, uh, Ms. President, just to give you a heads up, I do request that we, uh, have executive session for personnel and property acquisition.
As far as cleanup, District Four, May third through May tenth, that'll be at Pilahachi and Pilska, two separate places, cleanup.
All right. Mr. President, the, the, the two items under additional business that I mentioned before I sat down, one is, uh, a discussion of the property at eleven forty-nine Old Fannin. This is the strip center up in Scott's district, next immediately adjacent to Jay's district, where we've had a Dickens at the time trying to get the property owner to address the condition of the, especially of the parking areas and the access drives around this strip center up there. This is the bowling alley. This is the strip mall that's there, uh, in front of the bowling alley on Old Fannin. It's a prominent piece of property. It's right in the middle of Spillway and Old Fannin, um, visible. Uh, and the condition of the parking areas and the access drives at this facility is absolutely atrocious. Uh, and so we've been trying our best to call attention to that and to, to work cooperatively with the owner of the property and with the management of that property for quite some time. You may recall that we conducted a public hearing, uh, for nuisance consideration purposes some time ago. And it was at that hearing that you received information directly from the management of that property that there was activity underway to secure repairs, uh, and to clean the place up and to address the condition of the property. That was months ago, uh, and, uh, up until very recently, absolutely nothing had been done, nothing. Uh, and so out of frustration over the inaction of the property management and the ownership of the property, uh, I was instructed to immediately begin some form of, uh, litigation, uh, to force the issue. And, uh, as instructed, we did that. That was communicated to the property owner. Uh, and then they, apparently, they figured out that we were dead serious about getting this handled. Uh, and they started running around trying to figure out something that they could do to demonstrate, apparently, attempt to demonstrate good faith. Um, and so I wanted to bring that back up to your attention. We actually have some, uh, some photos that were taken, I believe, yesterday, right, Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna show you guys some photos. It's a, it's a number of photos, some thirty or so, that will demonstrate, um, either limited activity on the part of the property owner or no activity on the part of the property owner. I think it'll become clear to you when you see.
Looks like my drive was. Not really. Mine's travel.
Yeah, he may have mentioned that yesterday, that grate, uh, I don't think it's the appropriate grate for that hole, but he's got, the contractor said he's gonna figure out a way how to fix that.
Yeah, everyone's gonna save.
Yeah.
He's the simplest one.
So, you know, we, we got to this point because we had, I called, told the owner they, we're about to be forced to shut the whole strip mall down. Those fire trucks couldn't get back there. And so since then, they came in, you see that patch job right there, well, that right there, man, you could sink a car in that. And I mean that literally. Like twice, they've had to get vehicles towed out of it, their delivery vehicles. But anyway, so met with him yesterday and he has zero intentions of overlaying the whole thing. I'm not an asphalt expert, so I told him we'd get our experts over there to look at it. Um, the contractor, you know, now it's raining. It's not really the contractor's fault because the manager only brought him in, you know, two weeks ago.
Right.
Um, and like, you know, we've been dealing with this since you. So anyway, I know we have some legal standing before, but I didn't know, like, some of this, the other end, like, man, all that's just failed. I, I don't, there's no passion, and I think we passionate. We're gonna be back out there, you know, six months. Because they got water standing issues they don't know how to deal with. So y'all know, a lot of water stands is gonna get in your asphalt before a vehicle comes, it's gonna tear it all up. So Tim and Mike are gonna go out there and look at it, give us their professional opinion on what needs to be done. Um, but I can tell you, they fully intend to just go out there and patch. I don't know what, because it's not just this one, the, the parking lot right behind it, you know? But we have other ones too that we have in there. I don't know what authority we have and what we don't.
I, that's what I like to, what authority, I meant, Craig, can we do?
Yeah, so, uh, it, it won't surprise you that, you know, in our, in our, our responsibility as a county, uh, as it relates to maintenance of private property, there's, generally speaking, that's not the business that we get into as governing officials, maintaining private property. Unless it becomes to a point where that condition on private property has now begun to affect a broader community and has become in the nature of a public problem and not just a private property problem. Does that make sense? And so there's some limitations on that. Typically, uh, look, we, we are conservative in our approach to government here in Rankin County. We appreciate that people own private property and maintain private property and enjoy private property and don't need government interference when they're doing that. And so there's this tension that will necessarily show up from time to time between the use of private property in a manner that is in keeping with whatever that private property owner's thoughts are and an effect on public and surrounding properties that has now become something more public. And this board ends up in the middle having to address all of those considerations. I think this has risen to the point now where it has become a public nuisance problem. This is a public nuisance. These people that own this property are in the business of inviting the public to come and to shop there. And we literally can't get safety vehicles to a location where the public is invited to come. We got restaurants that operate in there, right?
We do.
You got fire hazards that are there, uh, and the, the notion that we should be restricted in our ability to. Properly respond in an emergency situation, that we can't allow that to happen. That's where this has gotten to. This has become a public emergency situation as it relates to the condition of the property. When you can't get emergency vehicles to respond in an emergency, you have a problem. Uh, and so this property owner has obligations, not to, just to their tenants. The businesses that lease from them and operate businesses there, but it's not just about them. It's not just about the customers that those individual tenants invite to come and to shop and to eat and to be there. It's also about emergency response and public safety. And aesthetics, I hasten to add that because that's not normally something that we major on here. It just, it needs to look presentable. It needs to look like it's in keeping with the quality of the surrounding community. And I think what's been allowed to happen here is. An absentee landowner who has not paid enough attention to the condition of this, of his property. And is not keeping it up to the standards that we expect properties to be in Rankin County. That's where we are. So that's a long way around to get to a point. We have limitations on what we can do to address this. I've, I've looked at what we do have. You've got a couple of options available to you. The emergency response issue is clearly demonstrable. And if that's the basis of seeking relief from the court, I think we'll be in really good shape demonstrating to the court. That this is in fact an emergency situation, that we really, we literally can't get emergency response in there. The court would then, I believe, the court would be justified in forcing the property owner to correct all of that. This is where it gets a little dicey, how they address it. So these patch jobs. That, that might be sufficient enough to eliminate the emergency situation. Does that make sense?
It's just not gonna last.
Uh, and it's not. Uh, and, and we're gonna be back again.
So how do we move past that?
Thank you. We can look at our International Property Maintenance Code. Sometimes we forget that this board, not this board, a prior board. Has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code as a code standard for the condition of properties all over our county. There have been some parts and pieces of the IPMC that have been excluded from our code regulations. We, there are certain things that other communities around the country think are more important than we do. And we don't enforce certain provisions, but the ones that we do enforce do provide some guidance for us under the IP, IPMC. For instance, uh, the code applies to premises, not just to buildings and structures. That's important to keep in mind. The entirety of the property is in view in terms of property maintenance. That's important. There has to be a reasonable level of safety from fire and other ha- hazards. That's in the code. And so that, we could demonstrate that this particular property is not in compliance with the IPMC. Common sense tells you, if you can't get the fire truck back there, that's a problem. So I don't know that we necessarily have to have this to make the demonstration, but I'm saying, we, we already, we do have that. Fire safety and other things. Your code requires from a maintenance perspective that a property owner keep everything, equipment, systems, devices, safeguards, and premises. And premises in a good working order. This is far short of good working order when you've got. Vehicles that disappear in craters in the parking lot or in the access drives. It's far short of proper maintenance. So I think we can demonstrate, here's where the issue comes in, Jay. S- Scott, specifically you guys, because it's your district that's impacted here the most, although this does, this affects every district in the county. Because any, anybody from all over Rankin County can come here and shop and, uh, and gets to see exactly what a property owner. Uh, is doing with their property and apparently what they think about Rankin County and Rankin County citizens. That's, that's what I get when I look at this. It's not acceptable, the condition. So, um, wh- what we can do is we can take the, the limited. Framework of the code, uh, provisions that we do enforce and make those fit and make a showing to the change record. That this property owner is not in compliance with that and get the court to help us fashion remedies that can be enforced. Okay? We can, we can either use change record to do that. That's my suggestion. It's a level of seriousness. The board's attention is focused on this and I think we'll probably have a better result. If we can get in front of the chancellor's on this, and this would be a basis to do that. Outside of the IPMC, outside of our normal, what I'll call our normal nuisance considerations. Public nuisance outside of that, which by the way gets significantly dicey, uh, for us because you've got to make specific findings and. It's just, there's a lot of work that would go into that. The other option that we are exploring, I'm, I'm looking at an email that I just received, literally within the past thirty minutes, from our friends at CNPDD. That there is, uh, some help that could be available to us through a separate ordinance that this board can consider and adopt. That would put significant teeth specifically on what would be called off-street parking and off-street parking facilities. Uh, you already have contacts within your current zoning ordinance that provides for that. It needs some beefing up, frankly. Uh, and I'd also like to introduce in that code section some fairly, I'll say aggressive penalty provisions for violators. So that when it comes to commercial properties, we need the property owner to, to, to be in a position to ask himself the question. Is it worth it for me to be in violation of a county ordinance on the, on the condition of my parking lot? Is it worth it to me to be in violation of that ordinance? Or is it more worth it to me to be in compliance? Which, which way am I better off? Especially if it's an out-of-county property owner? I, I want them to know if you just let your parking lot go to that condition right there, that's gonna be a costly endeavor for you. Either way, you can either fix it or you can pay for the county to fix it. That's kind of where I'd like for us to be. We need more teeth. Uh, the reason I think this is a big deal. Again, goes to the character and the quality and the condition of the neighborhood. Uh, and what we're inviting people to come and to, uh, to be a part of commerce in Rankin County. I, I don't want people to come to that. And to leave Rankin County and say to themselves, wow, am I really in Rankin County?
So won't you study on it some and share with us the wording and so we can all read it over? Because the contractor's supposed to come back with scope of work and, and share with Scott. And hopefully Tim and Mike get together and give us their recommendations for this specific one.
Yeah.
So the, the parking lot's up at PRV. Do we have any standing there to hold someone accountable?
We, uh, you know, PRV controls the use of all leasehold property through its leases. So the, the short answer, Jay, is not necessarily. If PRV, uh, wishes or desires similarly to the way that we operate the Reservoir Community District. That, that overlay, there's an interlocal agreement between PRV and Rankin County to enforce those provisions on PRV property. Right? They may want to participate in this and we can certainly engage them and it'd be appropriate to engage PRV to see, is this something that you guys want to? Uh, conscript for the purposes of your leases, uh, so that properties that are inside of PRV meet the minimum standards as well. It would make sense, by the way, if these properties are literally within a rock's throw of each other and one is PRV and one is not, it would make sense if the regulations applied equally. Invariably, somebody on this side or PRV is, is gonna be fat and happy with a bad-looking parking lot. And here we are forcing the adjacent property or the property across Spillway to come into compliance with ours. They're gonna have a lot of questions about that. It would make sense if we can be uniform.
Yep. It, to me, Craig, this, and I think this board is very conservative, less government, less regulation. Less getting involved or interfering with private properties, private, private property owners. However. This strip mall. There's, I don't know how many businesses in there, but several, many. And they're in, located in one of the highest populated areas of Rankin County. And they invite the public. They don't just invite, they want the public to come to these businesses. And spend their money, Rankin County people, their dollars, in these facilities. Put this out-of-county, maybe even out-of-state landowner, and in some areas it's out-of-the-country landowners. Take the money in, but don't put the money back into the property.
They don't maintain.
To maintain it. And we see it in more places than this. It's not as bad as this. I don't have a problem with telling them to clean it up or shut it down.
Yes, sir. Or sell it.
Or sell it. I don't care. Yeah. Uh.
Sell it to somebody that will maintain it.
When it starts affecting the communities around it and the safety of the people that they're asking come spend your money here.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not gonna put it back in the property.
Yes, sir. Very frustrating.
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, I have my instructions and, uh, I figured that was gonna be my instruction. That's why I went ahead and reached out. And so I think we'll have something to look at pretty quickly. Uh, my hope would be that maybe as soon as the first meeting in March, we'll be in a position to do something officially. So unless somebody has a desire to want to extend the process for review of that, longer than that, that would be my timeline for you guys. Just try to have something done on March the third.
This has been going on for nearly a year.
Oh, yes, sir. Beyond that too. Longer than that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but I mean, it.
Continuing problem.
Tightened that in June was, it really got going.
Yeah. And because this is all on the record, I, I, I wanna add one thing. Uh, that there actually are multiple owners of parcels that compose, what we would say here is the strip center. Now, I wanna be careful not to associate every single parcel owner with the owner that I'm suggesting has the biggest problem here. I wanna make sure, make that clear. There are others who, my understanding is, they are trying to get into compliance and they're trying to do the right thing. I, and I wanted to hasten to add that. Not everybody's a bad actor here.
Right.
Okay. Second thing that I wanted to ask you guys about is the potential for what, what I would characterize as a limited, limited. And brief moratorium on particular type of development activity in a particular supervisor's district. I'll let that supervisor, uh, raise any, uh, any points of order that he wishes to raise at this point. But there's one particular supervisor district here that's getting a ton of residential pressure to move, and see if this sounds familiar. To move agricultural rural properties into a residential context. Have you heard anything about that recently? And so, um, I am proposing and have prepared a draft of a six-month moratorium on development activity. The receipt of official plats, official plats. Not mama taking her forty-acre piece and carving out a twelve-acre piece for her to put her house on. Uh, because the bank is telling her, I can't give you a mortgage on the whole forty acres. I just need you to carve out a smaller piece. I'm not talking about that. That is a subdividing. What I'm talking about is a developer that's coming forward with a plat. To subdivide parcels for residential development pur- purposes. Moratorium would apply there and it would state if there is any intention to propose a plat that subdivides parcels. Of less than five acres, we are not gonna receive that plat for consideration until after this board has had an opportunity. Hopefully less than six months, but at least for six months to review its current comprehensive plan and its current zoning ordinance. That, that review, by the way, is already underway. Those conversations have already taken place. There will likely be some recommendations coming before the board before long. To consider an update to your comp plan and an update to your zoning ordinance. That provides some restrictions, some title restrictions on residential development activity in Supervisor District Four in particular. I went ahead and disclosed it, Steve.
I found that, it's.
So.
I mean, we've been talking about it most of the morning and so we do need to address it.
The reason that this is coming before you so quickly is because we have gotten contacted. By a multinational corporation that is looking to potentially develop. In Supervisor District Four and they have suggested that the lots would range in size from. Then in the neighborhood of an acre and a half to two acres. And that the number of houses on acreage tracks would number in the hundreds. The hundreds. Uh, and so because of that suggestion, uh, and the viewpoint that we have about pressure. For residential development in that area, I want you to think with me. The condition of the current public roads. The condition of the water infrastructure that exists in that district. The condition of your stormwater controls and stormwater management. Need I say more about the potential for flooding, the potential for sheeting of rainwater? The potential for hundreds of house tops being in a particular location and the pressure that that would put. On the existing drainage infrastructure that we have in place. And then probably most importantly, the pressure on the school district. Think about hundreds of residences being brought online in relatively close succession and the impact that that would have. On the community school. And because of all those things and other things, that this board needs time and room to be able to navigate and address and to make the growth manageable. Manageable, that's the key. We need some time to not have to consider what I'll call heavy-pressure residential development requests. I don't want us to be in a situation where we're trying to get our ducks in a row, especially in that district, but in others. This, this activity is applicable across the entire county. I don't wanna be as, be, us be in a situation where this, there is this race. By the development community to get applications in front of you for considerations that. Predate any action that you may take to update your comp plan and your zoning ordinance. I hope that makes sense. That's what a moratorium is for, by the way. Say, whoa, 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 whoa. We, we don't need this rush to the Board of Supervisors' office with applications while we're trying to get considerations thought through. And good, appropriate, um, high-level, manageable circumstances considered. So my proposal would be, with the board's authorization, to add the consideration of a six-month moratorium on development activities. Only for Supervisor District Four. It's very specific. It does not apply to any other supervisor district. And it precludes only subdivision development requests that include lots within the subdivision. Where any one of those lots is less than five acres. I would need a motion to add that and then a motion to approve that if that's the.
Well, the, the five acre. We're looking at watershed and a home, you know, generally a five-acre tract can hold its watershed. Until we can get past this review period, that five acre, we feel like we're being, we're protecting ourselves with that one thing is watershed. Uh, there's many others, but, uh, I make a motion that would prove it.
So you're good with five acres and above?
Yes. And this doesn't affect, Jay Bishop owns a hundred thousand or whatever, and he wants to give or sell. Some land to his son or to the guy that his farm held, whatever. It's not a subdivision. He's. Moving one block, you know?
This is plat. In fact, it's very specific.
So even if it's a plat of more than five acres, we're putting a moratorium on?
No, 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 no. Less than five acres. Less than five acres.
You're good those who make them there, so divide five hundred acres and five-acre lots?
I'd rather not, but yeah.
Your moratorium would not prohibit consideration, prohibit consideration of that within the six months. You could consider it. You're not going to necessarily approve it.
Right.
But you could at least consider that.
We don't have the infrastructure, we don't have roads, we don't have the water supply. There's so many things that would deteriorate quickly if we let this happen.
When you're studying, can you add emergency services to that?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. I think we all recognize, don't we? I mean, we're, right now, we're looking for an affordable piece of property where we can consider additional fire department staging. That, we've, we've got to be thinking about that, especially in this area of the community that is, quite honestly, is underserved in terms of public infrastructure.
It's, we like it. I mean, we like the slow life, the feel, the atmosphere, and that's why a lot of other people like it. And I'm sorry, we just can't take everybody at one time. So this is, I mean, I think moratorium is something that will give us a little cushion, a little time.
Otherwise, the growth will not be manageable.
And, and in the past year or so, month after month, this district has become the fastest growing with new houses built than any district in Rankin County. And it wasn't too many years ago, it was always the slowest. So the infrastructure hadn't changed, the water, most of it, hadn't changed, the school at size, hadn't changed.
I wanna make sure that it's clear, too. I think this needs to be stated. Your action here excludes any development that has already been approved, okay? So if there's a, if there's an application, or I'm sorry, if there, if there's a plat that's already been submitted and it just hasn't gotten through the process, that, that's unaffected. This is for new considerations that come online after the date of your adopted moratorium. So the one that you heard today, for instance, that rezoning request for the one in Pisgah that's got North Sand Hill and Midway, that, that one's already been taken care of, the review has already occurred with respect to the development activity, the number of lots, the size of the lots, that's all been addressed. And so that one would not be called up in this moratorium.
That would be one of the last ones if we do this.
I, that was on my mind, Steve. So from a timing perspective, I think we need to do this because if we wait until first of March.
Yep.
Over these next two weeks, we could have fifteen show up on the front door.
Yep.
So I think, I think we need to do this. I've got it ready. It's, so what I need, Steve, would be a motion to add and a motion to approve.
Steve made a motion.
Motion to add and Jay seconded.
All right.
Steve made a motion to add and Jay seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, we got a motion to add, now we need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Steve made a motion to approve. Jay seconded the motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll get that signed today and make sure that it's well-publicized.
I probably, I probably won't get elected again, but the developers will have it. But...
It is a, a short window, six months.
Yeah.
And, and I hope, I hope that we are complete with our comp plan and zoning ordinance review so that it can be addressed officially and we don't have to have a moratorium, we can just move on. I've got two matters under executive and they may overlap with what Keith has already told you.
Have any further additional business?
I got, go ahead. I would like to ask the board, I need to get a couple of loads of slag delivered to Pearl High School up underneath there at Bleacher. Can I get approval, make that happen there or I get something written?
We could go ahead and entertain that subject, too, to receive a written request for that from, from Pearl.
Okay.
Yep. So that would just be a motion to add.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to add.
Okay. Yeah, I second.
Brad made a motion to add, Jay seconded the motion to add, load of slag to Pearl School.
Two loads, I think.
Two loads.
Don't we cut me, man?
Short, short. All right, now I need a motion to approve.
All in favor?
All in favor? You did that pursuant to Mississippi Code section, I'm doing this for our kids from Hartfield Academy that are here to listen to how this board operates and to find out more about how county government works. I hope we are being good examples of how county government's supposed to work. Your authority to do what you just did is Mississippi Code annotated section nineteen dash three dash forty-two, sub-paragraph four. You have the specific authority under state law to provide assistance to any school in Rankin County for things, because our schools do not have road departments, they don't have road graders, they don't have maintenance guys that work on roads, they don't have asphalt available to them. So the state legislature allows the county, which has all of that available to it, to go on to school property and to provide limited services in accordance with that section.
Make it clear that to be eligible to fit in this, that request has gotta come from the school or school district.
That's correct. And it has to be in writing, which is why I badger my District Five supervisor about getting me a letter.
And now I make a motion to approve two loads of slag to Pearl with...
Thank you, Brad.
Second.
Written numbers.
We did.
We've already added it, yeah.
All right.
Second.
Brad made the motion to approve. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
My thing, Craig took a little bit of my thunder. I was gonna welcome Hartfield. I see some more students out there, so thank y'all for coming and being a part of our local government.
Are y'all taking notes? Y'all got your pen and paper? Let me see.
Y'all get that stuff.
Yes, she does, man.
Yes, she does. What about the other two? I don't see, oh. Oh, okay. Y'all know me on the phone.
It's on YouTube, too. You rewatch it.
Right.
Gentlemen, when you get ready to talk about the need to go into executive session, my two matters are gonna be the potential acquisition of real property and also to address what would be a personnel matter.
I make a motion, discuss the need for executive.
Second. Jay made the motion, discuss the need for executive session. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I make a motion to executive session for all those things that you did.
Second.
Second.
Jay made, Jay made the motion.
Scott.
Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All.